Renad, if you do the roll call, please.
Miller?
Here.
Eddinger?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
McEvers?
Here.
Gookin?
Here.
English?
Here.
We will rise for the invocation. I am not sure that Pastor Craig, if Pastor Craig Miles is here or not. I don't see him, so we'll move right into the pledge of allegiance. Woody?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will move on the agenda here to amendments. I don't believe we have any amendments to the agenda tonight. So our first item of business is a presentation. We have an annual report from the Arts Commission, and we have Jen Drake, who's the chairman of the Arts Commission. Welcome, Jennifer.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Let me get this loaded up quick. All right. I am Jennifer Drake, Chair of the Coeur d'Alene Arts Commission. On behalf of the entire commission, I would like to give you an update on what we've accomplished in the last year and how we're hoping to move forward in the fall, in the coming months. In the past year, we've added six new members, which is half of the commission. You can see the list of all of our current members right there. We do currently have a vacant seat, which we just, I believe this past week, sent out word to the public that we are looking to fill. So here's the shameless plug. If any of you know anyone who would like to work on the Arts Commission with us, including people in the public, if any of you know anyone. It's really a great commission to be a part of, and we encourage you to help spread the word so we can get that seat filled. All of the new members mean that we have a lot of new energy and ideas that we're infusing into new and existing products. We are often complimented and congratulated on the city's public art collection. It's a particularly extensive collection for a community our size. As of right now, our current value of the city's art collection is estimated at $1,573,193, which I think you agree is pretty impressive. We are looking forward to continuing to grow this collection in size, in scope of areas covered, and in the variety of art. So the question is, where is the art? Here are some of the projects we've worked on in the past year. We have worked with the Pedestrian Bike Committee to create the Art in Motion Tours. This is three biking and walking tours of the city's collection of art. There's a 12-mile bike ride, a two-mile walk, and a one-mile walk. There are brochures for this, and it's on the Internet. So you start wherever you'd like to start, and you follow it in the direction, and it's got a great flow to it. A lot of work went into mapping this out and making sure we could hit as many of the art pieces as we possibly could. It's a wonderful, all three tours are great. I highly encourage you to do them if you haven't done them already. We have continued with Art Currents, which is the outdoor gallery along Sherman Lakeside and the intersecting streets down there. We've got a number of new pieces, and the brochures for that are also in public places, City Hall, the library, so people can be sure to get the information on those pieces. The Fiddler Crab was purchased and installed out by the water along Spokane River. We poured the slab for it there along the river, so you can see it's in sort of its natural environment. We've gotten a lot of compliments on the placement of that one. Kate has been restored to her previous glory in Riverstone. She's once again greeting people along the trail and those who head to the park and to concerts. Quiétude was an Arts Currents piece that we purchased at a discount and is going to be placed in Riverstone on the northeast side of the pond. It's right next to a bench and the pond, so that, and it's between the bench and the trail around the pond, so that'll get a lot of public viewing as well. We continue with our upgrades to Under the Rainbow, the McEwen Arch. We have installed newer, brighter lights that reflect off the cables better. We are going to be wrapping the wires in a reflective vinyl that's like the the white reflective wrap that police cars have, so it's very reflective and hopefully will reflect those new lights better. And we are currently considering our options for wrapping the support structures in a different color or texture. The utility boxes in McEwen have been wrapped with historical photos of McEwen over the years. They also include wayfinders on the top with approximate walking times to bathrooms, Tubbs Hill, the lake, things like that. The photos were chosen from a selection of historical photos, and I think are actually quite incredible if you haven't seen those yet. Chief Morris Antelope has been installed, and the dedication is actually coming up soon, in a couple of weeks, on April 4. It's a great piece on the bulkhead between NIC and the wastewater treatment plant. The dedication that's coming up is going to include a blessing by the Coeur d'Alene tribe, and that is open to the public. And so I once again recommend everybody who's interested to come for that on April 4. We had the 20th anniversary of the Mayor's Awards in the Arts. It was a great success. We had live performances, a live painter, a pop-up art gallery. Everybody, it was a packed house. I think a lot of the people in this room were there, and I think you would agree that it was a great success. We were presented with a historic map of the city dating from sometime in the early 20th century. It's a city of Coeur d'Alene, and we were able to get it framed and get an archival quality mount on it so that it's protected for the ages. It's currently hanging in the old council chambers in City Hall. We designed a new logo for the Arts Commission. Our old logo was based off of the old City of Coeur d'Alene logo. Since we figured the city updated their logo, we should as well, and a couple of our members and our city staff helped to do this together in-house. We had the final year of the 16-year program that was the Summer Arts for Youth. Over the years, it touched a lot of lives of children in the community, especially people who might not have otherwise had the opportunity to study or create art. So that was a little bit bittersweet, but Yvonne Benziger did a great job over the years, and we are very happy for her service. And we received a donation, another former Arts Currents piece. It's called Plunge, and it's going to be placed at a trailhead near Potlatch Hill Road. Our upcoming projects that we're anticipating for the remainder of this year, we are working to put a prominent piece in Riverstone. We have a number of choices and possibilities, but I believe we're going to be starting with some sort of welcome gateway to Riverstone Park. If you've been out there lately, you would probably agree that the signage is lackluster, to say the least, and a lot of people don't actually know how to get to the park. So we're trying to partner with them to not only improve the signage, but to have something artistic and substantial as well. We are going to start on what we're hoping is kind of a citywide painted mural project. We took a look around the city and saw that there are a lot of empty canvases on walls, freeway underpasses, things like that, but are just begging for art. So we decided to start that with the wall that's in Sherman Square on Sherman that currently has a small mural on it, but we're hoping to fill the entire wall, and also the confluence of the Prairie and Centennial Trails. There's a lot of empty concrete out there, and we're hoping to fill it with some really fantastic art. And then we're also going to be pursuing the Community Arts Partnership with Emerge to provide free classes to youth and adults, a variety of art subjects year-round that would include two free public art shows a year. In addition, we are also considering requests from the Coeur d'Alene Symphony and some street performers and other similar things to broaden the scope of the Arts Commission so we start fulfilling our mission to a greater extent than we have in the past. I would like to finish up by saying that we're living in an environment that can be very hostile to the arts. You probably know that just last week, a number of state legislators voted against funding the Idaho Arts Commission. The Coeur d'Alene Arts Commission feels quite fortunate to be part of a community that values art and respects its role in creating a vibrant sense of place. The commission cannot function effectively without the support of our city, and we do not take for granted the support we've received for many years. We look forward to continuing to provide the people of Coeur d'Alene with many varied opportunities to enjoy the arts in their lives.
Thank you, Jen. I see that, I believe it was yesterday, that Spokane, they must be a little jealous of our arts program, so they had to up their game a little bit.
Did you see the specific mention of how one member of the council really wants signal box wraps all over the city? And although we were not mentioned by name, I have to think that they've been visiting Coeur d'Alene and seeing how successful that program is.
Yeah, I'm sure they were. Questions for Jen?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Jennifer. When you talk about broadening the scope of art, and I appreciate that for some of the non-sculpture-type of arts, I think that's really cool. You know, I showed up to the meeting a couple of months ago and asked about that, so I appreciate that you're looking into that. There's been talk in the community about a graffiti wall. Is that what the painted murals are, or can you talk about a graffiti wall?
That's actually how the Painted Mural Project began. We were discussing an open graffiti wall that was overseen by professional artists, kind of maintained so that there was a place where graffiti artists could come and do their work. And it evolved into this mural project. That's not to say that we're not doing the graffiti wall. I think that's definitely still something in our scope that we would love to do, and there's been discussion to do that. But we decided to start with these single painted murals to begin with and see how that went, and then, not to say that we couldn't also do the graffiti wall at the same time.
Would that be something that's going to be permanent? I mean, so someone paints the wall, and it stays up there? How long?
Well, it's the life of the painting. We would pre-treat the spaces. They would be painted, and then they would be treated afterwards with something, some sort of sealant to hopefully extend the life 10 years plus.
Excellent. On the McEwen Arch, which I know people love it, and that was facetious, but have you been working with the artist on these improvements?
We approached the artist initially to discuss these improvements, and he told us pretty much we could do whatever we wanted to do, that he was no longer necessarily going to be involved. And I think that, part of that's because he's from Massachusetts, if I remember correctly, so he's, it's not in town to do the work. But we explained to him, we've been in contact with him, explained to him the things we're going to do, and...
So he has his blessing, basically, by not, okay, that's cool. Finally, we're doing Mullen Road coming up this year. Are there any art opportunities there?
Yeah, we just actually had a presentation from Welch Comer last month talking about what they're doing. They gave us a plan. They gave us what we refer to as placeholders for art, things that they have specifically talked about, places that they would see art coming into play, and we're considering those. Our budget workshop is, I believe, next month, and that's when we really hash things out, talk about what money is in what fund to go to what place, and that's definitely something that's going to be at the forefront.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Quick one. Thanks, Jennifer. It kind of helps to kind of get the big picture. I seem to remember when I first did this, it was about the feathers on Northwest Boulevard, so it goes back a while. People on the commission?
Yes.
Do you have to be like an artsy person?
No, you don't.
Do you have like a truck driver and a crane operator, those types of people?
We actually have quite a wide variety of people, and it's really interesting because we have some people who are artists. We have some people who aren't artists but who have worked in the arts before, and then there's some people who have just been involved in the community and saw the opportunity and would love to be a part of it. So it's pretty fun to see the whole spectrum of people come together.
So you're not looking for anything specific?
Somebody who loves Coeur d'Alene and wants to be involved and sees this as something that they'd be interested in doing.
Nice. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Jennifer. We have a great arts commission, and a great arts commission has to have a great leader, and we thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
We will move on to the consent calendar. You got that, Woody?
I got it. Mr. Mayor, I would move for passage of the, approval of the consent calendar, including Resolution 16-011.
Motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion. And I have a question on this before we approve this, because I didn't know the order of doing this, but the minutes that we're approving for public works, it shows that Woody was here and he was absent. So can we direct staff to improve that or fix that?
Thank you.
Any other further discussion? Roll call, please.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion carried. We are now to the public comment portion of our meeting tonight. If there's anyone wishing to come and address the council, they would have three minutes to do so on public business. Anyone in the audience would wish to do that? Seeing none, we will move on to announcements. Any member of the council have announcements? Amy?
I just wanted to take a moment and welcome. We have a couple students in the audience tonight, one from Lake City High School and a few Boy Scouts out there. So thank you for joining us, and feel free to ask us any questions after the meeting.
Great. Dan?
Mr. Mayor, I was, just wanted to give a shout-out of appreciation to our first responders, Fire Department and the Police Department for the outstanding work they did when Pastor Tim was attacked a week ago Sunday. I'm just really impressed and very proud of how well the city dealt with that situation, so thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else? Any announcements? Okay. We will move on to General Services Council Bill Number 16-1003, Amending Municipal Code 425090 entitled Overnight Camping Prohibited. Chief White?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. What I have before you tonight is a request to amend our current camping ordinance. And really, the reasons behind this are just a couple-fold. What I have up in front of you is our current ordinance, and while it's simple and it's easy to understand, sometimes its simplicity could make it a little difficult for us when it comes to enforcing it, and I'll get into that here in just a second. Sorry, didn't know this was going to work like this. Some of the issues that we have with our current ordinance, really, there's a couple of big ones. First and foremost, there aren't exceptions built into the ordinance that will allow someone to camp in a public place if all the shelters were full. And really, what we did was, I have to give a shout-out to our legal department. Mr. Adams did a fantastic job doing all the research to this, and really, when this issue came about, we had him do, look at other cities' ordinances and what court challenges that they've underwent over the last little bit so we could draft an ordinance that made sense. We wanted to make sure that we had something where it was still addressing all of the problems and the issues associated with camping in the city and that sort of thing, while not criminalizing homelessness. And so through Randy's research, we identified a couple of problems with our current ordinance and then drafted the new one that would address some of those things. There's a couple of exceptions in the new ordinance. Number one, there's, I call it the friends and family rule, so you could have someone that came and stayed in front of your house in their RV for a week, for instance. So it's not going to prohibit, I don't know if this is a good thing or a bad thing, your in-laws for coming to your house and staying in their RV in your, in your front yard or out in front of your house and that sort of thing. And number two, we wanted to make sure that it provided better guidance for our law enforcement personnel, so we weren't issuing citations on the nights when, say, all the shelters were full, although that happens very, very rare. We wanted to make sure that that exception was in there.
Question, Chief. If someone comes, and this happened to me, a cousin came into town, parked their RV out in front, and they plugged it in. I heard that was against code. Would, does this fix that, or does it address that issue?
This specifically just addresses the camping part of that. As far as plugging it in, I have to defer to our legal people. I'm not aware of any specific part that says you can't plug a RV in.
Yeah, I don't, that would be a building code issue probably more than any other code, so...
Oh, those people.
Could be. A health and safety under building code or fire code, possibly.
Okay. Thank you.
So really, what this new ordinance would do, or the amendment to it, would just address some common situations that we encounter, make sure we're consistent with case law, and then we have some clearly defined exceptions in there. One of the ones that was brought up in the General Services meeting was the boat camping that we have out there on the docks. The way that would be addressed is Mr. Thomas in the Parking Commission would add something to the bottom of the parking slip. So after you paid, it would give you written permission to overnight camp in those slips. Sorry. And that's really the nuts and bolts of it.
Thank you, Chief. Questions for Chief White? Woody?
Chief, so you just addressed the boat parking. I didn't catch it all. Can you say that again? On the, staying on a boat overnight at the marina down here?
So if you're in a slip that where overnight camping is allowed and you pay for camping, or I'm sorry, for the parking slip, I'm not sure if you call it boat parking or whatever, is to moor it for that night, on the bottom of your slip, there will be something that grants you permission to camp there also. So you could stay on your boat overnight in those slips, with the way people are doing it currently.
And does this address trailers and motorhomes parked on the street, stored on the street?
As long as, well, yes and no. So currently, a vehicle can only be on the street for a certain amount of hours before it has to be moved. Now, what we run into with the current ordinance is we have someone who will, well, they'll go and stay in front of your house for a night, and then they'll go and stay in front of somebody else's house for a night, and stay in front of somebody else's house for a night, and they do that for the summer, really. And so we get repeated complaints about the same RV on the same block or in several blocks, and it becomes problematic for us. This would limit the amount of time that someone could do that unless they get permission from a homeowner. For instance, they can come and stay in front of your house for a week and that sort of thing, but it would address that concern, and it gives us some, some ability to enforce that problem.
Thanks. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Chief, I have a question. We have a lot of events in City Park in the summer, and what happens is some of the vendors or attendees of these events will have their RVs parked by the park, and they just go ahead and stay there because it's cheaper to pay the parking ticket than to find a place to park their RV. How would this affect them?
I think twofold. Number one, number one, we can prohibit it with the, with this camping ordinance. They couldn't do that unless, of course, it was part of some pre-approved plan by council, and that would be the written permission exception that's in here. So if it was one of those events where we knew that they were going to be setting up and having their, whatever it is in the north lot, say, or the City Hall lot, and we wanted to allow that sort of thing, we could certainly do that as part of the agreement for the event.
Thank you.
I think an example of that, Chief, would be they have an event down at McEwen where they stay overnight during the summer. I know, Bill, is it Smoke on the Water, or is that, is that what that event is? And so that would be part of that negotiated event.
Sure, and that's one of the exceptions that we wrote in here. We wanted to have the ability to still allow those things if council decided that was what they wanted to do, while just prohibiting some of the other conduct.
Yeah. Any other questions for Lee? Thank you. We're looking for council action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for, to pass the Council Bill 16-1003.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Renad, if you'd read the title, please.
Council Bill 16-1003, An Ordinance Amending the Municipal Code of the City of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho. Amending Municipal Code Section 4.25.090 entitled Overnight Camping Prohibited to provide definitions, clarification of prohibited conduct, and exceptions to the camping prohibition, providing for the repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for the publication of a summary, and providing for an effective date.
Roll call, please.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Move we suspend the rule?
Second.
Motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Miller?
Motion carried. We will move on to Resolution 16-012, Agreement with Emerge CDA for Monthly Community Art Class. Hillary Anderson will be giving the report. Welcome, Hillary.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Load my PowerPoint. All right. I am here this evening on behalf of the city's Arts Commission. The Arts Commission, as Jennifer Drake had mentioned, it's nine community members that have volunteered their time to help oversee the city's public art collection, which is valued at over $1.6 million, and also they're tasked with responsible management of the city's art budget, which is currently in excess of $500,000. And they are asked to be doing this in line with the city's arts policy as well as mission, which is stated here on this slide, which is really expanding the role of arts in the community and the availability of that, the welfare and educational experiences to the citizens of Coeur d'Alene. So the request is for the city council to approve a one-year contract with Emerge for monthly art classes, which would be two free monthly art classes, as well as two free public art shows during the course of one year. Emerge is a recently-formed nonprofit community art group, and they, their mission is to help the communities budding artists to Emerge. They offer classes for youth and adults. They have art studio space. They have art gallery, and they also have art shows for the community. It was modeled after the Zoo Town Community Arts Program, which is in Missoula, which is a very strong partnership between that group, the city, and the school district. The instructors are paid and credentialed to local artists, and they also all have background checks, which is important to note. The vision is to have fun and fresh art classes, and so it's a variety of classes and experiences from visual to performing arts. Some of the recent ones have been weaving and puppet-making, so I think classes like that, but there could be music, there could be dance, there could be all kinds of, you know, photography, anything that falls within those categories would be something that could be experienced at Emerge CDA. I'll talk through the contract highlights, financial analysis, and performance analysis, which are from the staff report. So the contract highlights, the funds are limited, and so it's $1,000 a month. That allows them to purchase the materials and supplies for those two fine arts classes and also pay for instructor costs. The classes in the summer months would just be for the youth, and so that would be for three months, and so that would be the youth under 18. The remaining nine months would have, one class would be for youth, and the other class would be for adults. And then the two art shows, as I mentioned, would be free and open to the public, and that would be to display the art that came out of the classes. The commission and staff has spent more than 80 hours vetting the contract and this possible partnership. We started communications with Jenny Hegstead, who's the director and founder of Emerge last March. So in March 2015, we started these conversations. The financial analysis is, again, it's $1,000 a month, so a total of $12,000. Again, it would be limited for how it could be used. The unused funds would roll over, and so then it would be, we would pay less that next month if there were funds that were rolled over. They would also be allowed to use $165 a month to produce and promote those public art shows. This is consistent with the percent for the arts program under the arts policy. Under maintenance, there is a line for education, and the council did adopt the arts policy by resolution originally in 1999, and again, with the amendment in 2008, and both of those did include education. And so this is consistent with the vision of providing educational experiences for art. The performance analysis, there would be up to 30 students that could benefit from this each month, so 15 students per class is what they're envisioning. That's similar to other art classes around the community. So as many as 360 people over the course of a year could be exposed to these free community classes. And again, that's adults as well as the youth. The other thing is that any materials and promotional information would say sponsored by the Coeur d'Alene, City of Coeur d'Alene Arts Commission, and so that does show where the money came from and credit it back to the city and the Arts Commission. There would also be a board position for one of the Arts Commission members to sit on the board. So there's currently seven board members on Emerge, and so the eighth position would be for the Arts Commission to sit on there and to be able to monitor and make sure that this is consistent with the contract and the vision of this partnership. There would also be timely and detailed activity reports required. The contract has provisions for reviewing their performance, and there's also termination provisions. So there's, if they're not performing up to the contract, we could terminate at any point. And there's also an ability for either party to give 30 days' notice prior to termination for any, for any reason. I'll speak a little bit more about the performance on the next slide. Did a cost-benefit analysis just to kind of show how this compares to the Summer Arts Program, and they are different to a degree because the Summer Arts Program was really only, two months of the summer, it was only for youth under 18, and it was largely self-funded, although there was a cost of $7,300 just to run it, which I think was underfunded. We were definitely underpaying the director as well as the instructors, and only charging about $30 per student to attend the class, and there were some scholarships. But wanted to kind of show, you know, if you were to compare the two, what would it look like? And so showing the Emerge one is, you know, $1,000 a month, $12,000 over the course of the year, but it would be an annual versus just two months of the year, and so it would provide additional benefits. And I mentioned the 360 students or individuals could be benefiting from that. from that. So students on the 360, that's youth as well as adults. So I think this kind of helps show, you know, the benefits cost. Obviously, the Summer Arts Program was amazing. I think we were really lucky to have that. It was a lot of work, and I think how it was so successful was the director we had in place, Yvonne Benzinger. Now that that's terminated, to start it again would take a lot of work on staff's end to try and recreate that, see if we could even use the Harding Center, figure out the lease, figure out the costs, all of that, coordinate the program, instructors, et cetera. So I think this new partnership opportunity is really exciting because it is, it goes beyond just the two months. It goes for a full year. It doesn't require that additional staff time. And so it is something that would really benefit, I think, the community and is in line with the arts mission, as stated previously. So some of the other benefits that I really wanted to point out is this is a pilot project. So it's just a one-year contract, so the council and the commission can reevaluate and say, is this working or not? I think that's very important. It's, we're not locked into this long term. It's really kind of an incubator, in a sense. It's allowing people to figure out, you know, what types of art are they interested in? Because the variety of art classes that are going to be available and free to the community, you could test out and say, oh, I've always wanted to try a guitar class, but you don't have to sign up for the entire guitar class session. You know, it's just one time. See if you like things. So I think that's exciting for youth and adults. It does feel that need in the community because, again, we're now, we don't have our Summer Arts Program, but also we don't have anything year-round that's like this, and we don't have anything for adults. It also allows that participation without investment. So again, if I wanted to take a guitar class, I don't have to go out and buy one or rent one for a whole session. I can just go and sample one. Or if I'm going to go and take a photography class, or pottery, or puppet making, or things like that, you can just go and test it out and see, is that something you're interested in? And then that also benefits the businesses in our community because there are ones that offer successive classes. And so you could sign up for some of the NIC classes where it's jewelry making, and there's a series of four classes, or there's six classes at the Crock Center specific to dance. So it allows individuals to have that opportunity to experience it and then find other places in the community where it really benefits. Kind of it's this mutual, mutually beneficial program. Wanted to provide this slide as well, just to show, I mean, we talked about our arts collection in the city and how valuable that is, but just art in general, the benefit of that for a local economy is outstanding. I mean, if you look at this slide and the statistic, this came from the Americans for the Arts, but just to see even just the nonprofits arts industry and how much is generated from the economic activity, I think it's very impressive. So we should be proud of our arts program. And I love this quote from Pablo Picasso. I think there really is, there's an artist in each of us. So it's something that was, really is unique about this opportunity to do this partnership where it's not just providing for the children, but for the youth, to kind of tap into that creative spirit that each of us have. So art is beneficial to everyone. I did a Google search and came up with 1. almost 6 billion hits for the benefits of art. And if, you just see the wide-ranging things of how it really benefits art. Obviously, we know with kids, it's really important for cognitive development. It's great for building confidence. It's great for communication. It's important for stress relief for a lot of individuals, social connections. Art is used in therapy, and they're finding it's very beneficial for those that have post-traumatic stress disorder, for cancer, for the elderly, all of that. So I think this program, again, kind of offers that opportunity for all ages. The arts policies, I mentioned, the council did adopt this by resolution, and the text that's in bold is really just showing where this does fit within the arts policy to have education and provide these types of opportunities for culture, for our community, and for education. And also, from the art policy, public art and how it's defined, again, the public art and the work of art, it's really not just limited to statues and sculptures in the community. It really goes beyond that, and that's what the Arts Commission is interested in doing with the murals and these community arts types of partnerships. Again, duties and responsibilities, which is from the city code under Arts Commission, talks, again, same types of things, you know, to really get that public interest and participation and the freedom of artistic expression. There are so many thank yous that we've received already for the Summer Arts Program, and I would expect if we enter into this partnership, we're going to get a lot more. We've already heard great things from Children's Village in terms of how beneficial Emerge is with having classes and having their public art shows. It's been a packed house for the last three public art shows, it sounds like at Emerge, which is exciting, where they are displaying the artwork that they've created. And I know that everyone is very grateful, especially the youth, for having been able to have that type of experience through our Summer Arts Program. Here's just some samplings of ones that were thanking us for allowing them to try some yoga classes for free. So again, Arts Commission, thanks you as well as the youth, and I would stand for any questions you might have about the Emerge contract.
Thank you, Hillary. Questions? Ron?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say that this proposal was brought to the General Services Committee, and we passed it unanimously. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other questions for?
Can you go back to that slide on the benefits? Showed the money, the free one next to the new one?
Oh, yes, the cost benefit. Yes.
So we used to do this free, and we touched how many people? Or what, we used to do it, and we would charge people?
We would charge people. So it wasn't for free. So it was $30 per student. There were some scholarships available. I believe there were 19 last year, scholarships available. In the past, sometimes that was that they could attend for free or just a reduced rate.
So the $12,000 that you're proposing this year for 360 is about 32 bucks a person?
Correct. Yep. So it's just, it's same cost and very similar to other programs around the community.
Okay. In the last 15 years, how come this didn't evolve into a pay thing, or a free thing, I should say?
I'm not sure the history of it. I think because Yvonne was, you know, willing to keep running it. She ran it for 16 years. I think, I think they didn't look at changing how it was structured. I know she had expressed, I think that they weren't, well, she never said you weren't paying me enough, but I think it's a lot of work to ask someone to do, to be the director of a program such as this with just all of the responsibility built in. So we're lucky that we were able to have her excellent leadership for the number of years we did. But I think it's not a sustainable model. That's something that the commission had talked about. Do we try and recreate Summer Arts Program? If so, how do you do that? And how do you have it so that, you know, you are paying the appropriate fee for the director, for the instructors, you know, and then you'd have to raise the cost of the class for the students? Or do we pitch in? And then they were also going out and finding grants as well. And so Yvonne was doing that to try and seek out grants to supplement it. So that's how it was even able to be $30 per student. So really, the $33.33 that Emerge would cost is a very good value.
Couple of questions, and how long's Emerge been around?
They opened last year. I know they started conversations, I think, early 2015. It sounds like, I had to talk to Councilman Gookin. I thought they'd open in July because I saw some emails, but I think they actually opened closer to September when they were, because they had their space, but then they had to get it all prepared. So I think they're open to the public in September or maybe early October, but...
And Councilman Gookin mentioned something about performing arts and music, and that is part of this?
It is. It could include dances, music, those types of things, as well as arts that you would see, painting and photography, any of those types of classes.
Like to see that happen, you know, expand a little. Thank you.
The questions? Danny?
Well, I would just, not a question, but just kind of like Ron, make a few comments. Just, I'm really impressed with the, what I see about the program and the potential. Just having worked in former life with a lot of kids, I think that this is just a great thing to have, and especially that it's got a wider breadth of options, especially, you know, with different kids with different outlooks and issues. It just, that's a great thing to have, and they're certainly not going to turn into adult artists if they don't get a chance, maybe as a kid. And when I think about some of the things that we, you know, approve in our other committees for tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands, you know, I for one will be happy to, you know, vote to approve this, especially, it sounds like it's a line item that we've already got something. It's got some borders around it, so it's a limited pilot project. So anyway, I'm glad to see it.
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so Hillary and I spoke a little bit on the phone about this, and one of my concerns was, of course, how long Emerge has been around because we're signing a contract with them that's longer than their lifespan. But were there any RFPs sent out for this, other organizations that could have handled this?
No, it was something that the commission had discussed, and it was an opportunity. We had started talking with Jenny Hegstead even before last March. I think Steve Anthony was in conversations with her, and she was forming this. And as I mentioned, it was similar to that Zoo Town model where it is really that partnership. We did discuss if there was other businesses or organizations around the community that would offer a similar thing, and there really isn't to have this type of thing. There's, obviously, NIC has arts classes, but it's more limited in scope, not necessarily focused on the youth. The Crock has some types of classes, not, again, it's not just arts, Gizmo, it's more makers type, summer arts, but not, not to this kind of wide-ranging. So we did not do an RFP for this. It just made sense that we could, obviously with your blessing, figure out if there was an opportunity to do this type of partnership to create this really, the opportunity for public.
And on the funding, so this comes specifically out of the art maintenance?
Correct.
Line item. Is that something that could ever fluctuate that would jeopardize this program?
Right now, we have $120,000 in there, and that comes from the .33% for the percent for the arts. And so it accrues that and the 1%, the other public art budget. Those accrue based on the above-ground city infrastructure projects. And so, you know, if we had lots and lots of maintenance that we had to do, we've already been trying to catch up on some deferred art maintenance this year. So I think it's a healthy budget. The public art budget is also healthy. So, and I guess, again, that's the nice thing about this being a pilot project, a one-year contract, to reevaluate and make sure it's not compromising that budget for maintenance.
And then after a year, if, say, someone else pops up that we, that we don't know of, who says, hey, we could do this too, then...
Right. If there's some other opportunity that the city wanted to explore, that is a possibility as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Hillary, I'm anticipating that this is going to be a pretty popular program, and I'm sure you guys have already thought about this, but when you have 15 students that I'm coming in and I'm going to be in your first class, they're going to really like it. So they're going to immediately want to sign up for next month. So there's probably some rules in place because we want to serve the maximum number of people, where you can come into a class if it's not full, but you're opening up for new people all along.
And that was discussed, and I think that would for sure be a provision of the contract and the agreement, just to make sure, because you're right, you don't want to have the same people get the free classes throughout the year and other people not having that opportunity. So we talked about having a waiting list and then having the ability to make sure that it was opening up to new people.
And in going through the contract, you have some very good oversight language. So I don't know if it was our legal staff that put in this, so give them credit for that or for your group.
Randy Adams was excellent in helping out with that.
But there's some very good oversight language in there, so I really appreciate that. So. Any other questions?
I just had a couple of things on general services, and thank you very much for bringing this back. I think I really made you jump through the hoops at committee level because I had a lot of questions about this program, and one of them was the number of people it can serve, and also that it apparently can be open to anyone in the region. And I felt a little bit like, shouldn't this just be Coeur d'Alene taxpayer, you know, ability for them to come to this class? So I know we went through some of that. And then the other thing is the expanding a little bit on how the, this benefits other organizations because I think Emerge as an association has been around a little bit longer than their building.
Correct.
But, but I was kind of concerned that we're creating something that's competing with ballet schools or competing with what North Idaho College does. And so I'm starting to get more comfortable with the fact that what you're attempting to do is say, we're going to get one person some, no investment exposure. It won't be the same person going to classes year-round, and then that person would then hopefully be encouraged to go sign up for ballet lessons or go sign up for classes at North Idaho College, and then really take that, you know, as a springboard approach. So, and I'll just close with, I went by Fernand Elementary the other day, and it was kind of interesting. My son went to school there, but he, it says it's a STEM academy, and it says, "Out of this building come great scientists." And he, my kid's an art guy, and he says, well, where did the rest of us go? So I kind of, in my mind, thought, you know, a program like this is, there's a need in the community for it, and we need to support science, technology, and all of the math, but the arts are really critical to, to all of the folks here. So thanks for bringing this back with all those questions answered. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Amy?
I just have a quick comment. I wanted to thank the Arts Commission and the planning staff at the city for working on this. This is a, an expansion of our opportunity, like Hillary said, excuse me. And they did a lot of research with our legal team and our finance director to make sure that this worked, and it was really important to the commission to be able to offer something new and broader to the community. So I want to make sure that they get a little shout out for all their hard work.
Okay. Well, if there are no other questions, we're looking for council action.
Well, I would make a motion to approve Resolution 1612, approving an agreement with Emerge CDA for monthly community art classes.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Gookin?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Excuse me. Ettinger?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Mr. Mayor, as long as we're on the topic of art, I'd like to offer up a motion to direct staff to review our arts ordinance and adjust it so that the staff liaison is made a little bit more generic, and also to run it by the Arts Commission to have them offer any input that may improve our arts ordinance.
Can you say that again?
Our arts ordinance is very specific to sculptures, and it specifically states in our code that the recreation department provide a liaison to the Arts Commission, which is no longer the case. So if we could update that language to basically say, a staff liaison will be appointed, and then also to run it by the Arts Commission to see if they would have any input with regards to language that may help them explore other arts opportunities.
Ron?
Steve Anthony was the Arts Commission liaison before. So seems that maybe Bill Greenwood took Steve's spot. Maybe Bill would like to serve on that committee.
And he's thrilled. But right now, the planning commission, or the planning department is in charge of the arts. I guess Bill's coming up. He has some words to say.
So... I don't want to push this off on you. If you want, if we want to give it back to Hillary, that'd be fine.
There you go.
So you're right, it was Steve's. And during his tenure, it was given to planning when we decided to merge both the Parks and Rec. And so it was a larger amount on his plate, and so there was discussion about taking it and moving it to planning, and that's where it sits now. And Councilman Gookin's idea about saying a staff person is probably a good one. Who knows if it stays with Hillary or not? I don't know.
I guess I got a question for Mike. Mike, is this something that we need a motion, or could we just direct staff to come back with a recommendation on, I guess, Dan, you're looking at cleaning up some language?
In the ordinance, because the ordinance is very specific to recreation department. But I'd also, since our Arts Commission is doing a good job in expanding what it is we do as far as art, maybe having them provide some input on the ordinance, which is, again, is very specific to sculpture, big things outside. And I think art is more than that. So maybe we should look at it and see what we can do.
I think you can certainly do a motion directed either to staff or to the Arts Commission, who is charged with running the arts program, to, in their group, look at these ideas. The more specific you can be to staff or the Arts Commission about what ideas you want to look at would help. But you, so you can do a motion to do that, or you could suggest that, even one of you could take that to the Arts Commission. But I guess if you want staff to do it, we typically would look to a majority of council to direct us to do that.
So Dan, you would just like someone, whether it's staff or the Arts Commission, to look at the ordinance for some updating?
Yeah.
And, but Mike is saying that maybe he would like a little bit more. So you would like the staff liaison part of it?
Well, staff liaison needs to be fixed because right now in our ordinance, it says recreation.
Okay. So that's something that needs to be fixed. So that's something that staff can directly work on, that they can fix that, because it says recreation, and now it is really, it could be any...
Yeah.
An appointed staff member.
Could be an appointed council person.
No. We have a, we have a council liaison, but just to say, like Kiki just said, just some, some staff liaison, which we could appoint then, and so it doesn't have to be fixed to a department.
So Mike, so he can clean, legal can clean... So Mike, so he can clean, legal can clean that specific language up, but maybe you would like to have a motion to direct the...
Second, second motion to direct Arts Commission.
Arts Commission to update the, look at the ordinance for updates?
Would you like to comment on that, Jennifer, since you're the chair?
There actually has been some discussion, very informal, about changing the ordinance and updating it. And that kind of started when we started looking at broadening our scope a little bit, because we noticed the same thing you did, that it specifically says physical public art. It's not something we've approached yet, but we'd be more than happy to look into it.
So it sounds like that's being taken care of.
We haven't formalized anything. There's been discussion at meetings saying, do we need to change this? So if somebody needs to direct us to do that, we can, or we can just continue down the path we've already started.
Okay, so Mr. Mayor, let me make two motions then. So the first motion would be to direct staff, I'm sorry, Mr. Gridley.
Can I make a comment? First, I think you could, typically, when council wants to explore ideas with groups, they may have a workshop with that group, and I don't know if there's been a workshop with the Arts Commission, but that's one option. If you felt like there were things that council wanted to explore one-on, or not one-on-one, group to group, you could do a workshop, so that's just another option.
Thank you. So I'd like to make two motions. So the first one would be to direct staff, you guys, to clean up the ordinance with regards to the staff liaison.
Second.
That's a motion. Thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? So the motion is for, for the council to direct staff to correct language that's in the existing ordinance. Okay, so we have motions.
Just so I'm clear by correcting it, you want to broaden it so that anybody could be, any staff department, or any department could be the liaison.
So that it's not specific to a department, but it's, just has language that says that it is a staff member, not specific to one department.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
That's what I'd like to see.
Any further discussion on that? Renata, would you just like a voice vote, or you want a roll call on that? Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And a second motion, and I can, I can rough draft this, but a second motion would be to direct the Arts Commission to continue looking at other opportunities for arts and potentially hold a workshop with council.
Okay.
Okay.
So we have a motion to have the Arts Commission continue to look at the ordinance with a potential recommendation to council.
Right. Yeah, okay.
Do we have a... Focus it, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Focus it on, on the music, on the theater.
Is that...
That's just going to come back that way, if you don't ask for it?
Can you give us a hint as to where you were thinking of going?
We haven't discussed language. We've just noticed that when we were looking at potentially doing a community arts program or working with the symphony or things like that, it does specifically say in a section of the ordinance that the 1%, 1% fund is specifically for physical pieces of art. And we wanted to acknowledge that there's more art than just physical things you find on a street corner. We have not discussed the actual language that goes into that, but that was sort of the direction that we had been discussing.
I sort of feel like a workshop wouldn't be all that necessary. I feel like the Arts Commission are the people who are the experts that have been working on this, and that they acknowledge, as we do, that some language needs to change. So, you know, I would say that the motion might be to direct the commission to come back with what the language adjustments in that ordinance need to be, and then have council approve those.
I'm good with that.
Second that one.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? Do you have that, Renata, the motion there?
Maybe I should read it one more time. Okay, it was to direct the Arts Commission to look at ordinance changes, to broaden the scope of the term art for more than just physical art pieces.
Okay, so Dan made the motion, and Woody seconded that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Thank you, Jen. Move on here to other business. We have a presentation acceptance of the 2015 Housing Needs Assessment, and we have Molly Fitzpatrick. Give him the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Let me get my presentation pulled up here. Great, well, thanks so much for having me this evening. Get this out of the way. My name's Molly Fitzpatrick. I'm with BBC Research and Consulting. For those of you who may not be familiar with us, we're an economic and housing research firm that's based in Denver, Colorado. We do a lot of housing-specific work, including studies that are required by HUD, as well as market analyses, needs assessments, sort of the full scope of housing issues related specifically to policies. We've done a lot of work in the state of Idaho, and we've done a lot of work actually in Coeur d'Alene. We actually conducted the very first Housing Needs Assessment for the city of Coeur d'Alene back in 2006. We came back in 2011 and conducted a housing discrimination analysis, which is required by HUD. And then just last year, we updated both of those studies through this study, the Housing Needs Assessment and Barriers Analysis. So tonight, I'm just giving a brief overview of that study, which you've, you've hopefully seen at some point. I think, I think we wrapped it up at the end of October of last year. So I'm just providing a brief overview of that. This, this gives an overview of, of the housing market in Coeur d'Alene with a focus on, on housing needs. It also provides a barrier analysis, which is related to fair housing or housing discrimination, and that component is something that's required by HUD, that's related to the receipt of community development block grant funding. So one of the goals of the 2006 study, as well as the, the most recent study, was to provide recommendations about how to create and maintain balanced housing stock in the city. And that's really so that the city can do, do a few things. One is to provide various housing options for the diverse workforce, so to provide housing at price points for the entire workforce, to provide stable environments for children and for families, and to be a lifecycle community, one that has housing options for residents in all phases or all stages of life. And then finally, just to be able to maintain diverse, vibrant, and interesting culture in communities, to be, to be a community that welcomes that. So with that background information, let's dive into a little bit of the, the data. We'll first talk about some of the actual trends since 2000. We took a pretty long view when we were doing this update. First, the city has grown, as you probably know. That growth has been on pace with the county overall. There were no substantial changes in race, race and ethnic distribution, although Hispanic residents did grow faster than non-Hispanic residents, but, but the overall demographic stayed relatively the same. That's not true for income, so there, there were some changes in the income profile over the, the period that we looked at. And specifically, the gap between renter incomes and owner incomes widened. So owner incomes, which are already higher than renter incomes, obviously, increased even faster than renter incomes, so that gap began to widen. And that's particularly true in the last five years, although it is true for the whole 15-year period that we looked at as well. There are some modest changes in the housing stock, so the proportion of housings that are households that are single-family detached, the actual structure, distribution of households. The city remains largely single-family dwellings, single-family detached dwellings. There was some increase in, just in the last couple of years, of multifamily dwellings, larger multifamily structures. But overall, the actual distribution of housing types is largely the same as it was in 2000. It's still really difficult for the average worker to buy a home in Coeur d'Alene, and affordability is even more of a challenge for renters than it is for owners.
Molly, I have a question before you move on too quick. When you talked about income differences between homeowners or home purchasers and renters, is there, those are real people, and is there different ages, different brackets? I mean, I think of a, a kid out of college renting and people, retired people moving in and buying. Would that change that, the way that gap is getting bigger?
That is, the, the, it does change it to some extent. So you're right in that you're more likely to be a buyer, you know, sort of in the middle age range. So when you're younger, you're more likely to rent, and then as you get older, seniors are actually likely to rent again after, when they're downsizing or potentially looking for a more accessible option. The proportion of residents that are renters and owners didn't really change. So you're about 60% owners, and that stayed largely the same, but the incomes within those brackets really changed.
Okay, thanks.
That answer a question?
Yes.
Great, so we, we took a closer look at rental affordability. As I mentioned, renter incomes have not kept up with housing price increases, with renting increases, so their purchasing power actually declined over the past 15 years and acutely over the last five years. So we see that in both the data that we look at, but also in resident reports. So we did, we conducted a survey of residents as part of this study, and 2/3 of those that said they looked for housing in Coeur d'Alene said that it was moderately or very difficult to find a rental unit in Coeur d'Alene, and that was largely related to the affordability. We also conduct as part of this analysis a, a gaps analysis, which compares supply and demand of the rental property and then of those that can afford it. And in that analysis, we found a shortage of 1,745 rental units priced for those earning $20,000 or less per year. So that's, that's rental units that would go for $500 or yeah, or less. We found a shortage of about 1,745. And that, that gap, we call that sort of your rental gap, that's actually grown since 2009, which was the last time we looked at it. In 2009, that gap was 1,452, and so it's gone up to 1,745. Assisted rental housing, so federally assisted rental housing, has helped address that gap to some extent. Despite the fact that it grew, we think it would have grown substantially more had there not been any federal subsidies or assisted housing that had gone into the city. And that includes low-income housing tax credit developments, that also includes other forms of subsidized housing, so housing choice vouchers or other project-based housing units as well. So we think that that gap would have been an additional 200 households or 11% higher had those federal subsidies not been in place. Generally speaking, or on average, those assisted units go for about $150 less than market rate units. So that, that equates to an annual subsidy basically for that renter of $1,52100. In addition to, to rental needs, we also found needs in the, in the ownership market. So housing prices for your for-sale housing are basically back up to pre-recession levels. However, wages have not gone back up to pre-recession levels. So you've got housing prices that have, that have really bounced back, but wages that have not. And so that creates an additional mismatch there for, for renters that want to buy or for homeowners that may not have a lot of equity or may have lost equity potentially in the crash as well. We see that again in the data, but also in reports from residents. We asked residents in our survey, which of the following housing types are most needed in Coeur d'Alene? And the top answer was homes priced below $200,000. It does say 200, but it's $200,000, just to be clear. So, so that was the top answer. Also breaking into the top five was homes priced below $100,000. So the market analysis that we conducted, in addition to resident and stakeholder input, really helped us identify what, what we believe are the top housing needs in Coeur d'Alene at present. And those are the shortage of rentals priced below $500. As I mentioned before, there's a shortage of about 1,700 of those. The second need is affordable housing for workers to buy. The graphic that's shown on this shows sort of the variety of housing types and price points that you have in Coeur d'Alene, and there certainly is a variety. However, most of that variety is, is skewed toward the top end. So, so the average worker in Coeur d'Alene earns about $35,000 per year. The only house on this list that that worker could buy is actually the manufactured home listed at 114. So even a townhome in 2015, these are based on actual sales data from 2015, so even townhomes in 2015 were going for, on average, $261,000, $262,000.
I have a question. In the lower right corner, it says waterfront condos, 3.2 million. Really?
Right, that's, we said the same thing, really. And I think that there was most likely a new development that came on that was high-end condos. So this is based on the first two quarters of 2015 multiple-list service data, so anything that was listed or sold in the first two quarters of 2015, and this was the average price of those. So I'd have to go back and double-check and see how many were included in waterfront condos, but there were...
Is this just the Hagadon, the Bose radio out there?
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be many.
Right.
It would be maybe just a couple, so that probably isn't, isn't a valid thing to put on a list, in my opinion, because it's very, very few.
Sure, yeah, and I can go back and double-check and see exactly how many that was. And, and even if it was, you know, 10 units, they may have all been in the same development, because those tend to come online at the same time.
And so it says, site built less than two acres, $377,000.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what, the houses that they're building up there by the high school, that's what those things are going for?
Well, these are not all new builds. These are, these are anything that was listed or sold in the city of Coeur d'Alene.
Ouch.
So these are resales as well. In fact, predominantly resales, especially when you start checking about the site-built homes, because that's the majority of your housing stock right there. So relatively high prices certainly compared to, to average wages or, or higher prices for those who are trying to buy. So the third need that we identified was accessible housing, or easily adaptable housing for people with disabilities, as well as for seniors. About 15% of Coeur d'Alene's population has some type of disability that's based on self-reported data through the census. And then we asked those people whether or not their house actually met their accessibility needs, and 1/3 of those households that, that do have someone with a disability said that their current housing does not meet their accessibility needs. So there's a clear need for, for accessibility improvements and accessibility, accessible housing stock. As part of this analysis I mentioned at the beginning, we also conduct a fair housing analysis, which looks at conditions that impact protected classes, like people with disabilities, and their ability to find or access housing. So we look specifically at what barriers beyond just affordability might be impacting their, their access to the community. And, and overall, we found very few barriers to fair housing choice. So fair housing experts were really complimentary of city staff, really complimentary of residents' understanding of fair housing, which is great, and that's a testament to the efforts that the, the city has actually put in place to, to help educate residents and landlords. There are no areas with, with substantial racial or ethnic or even poverty concentrations. That's also a flag that HUD looks for. We did identify a couple of issues that we think could use some improvement. The first of those is, in Idaho in general, compliance with accessibility requirements of the Fair Housing Act, as well as the Americans with Disabilities Act, is actually pretty low, and Coeur d'Alene is not an exception to that. So across Idaho, compliance is low, same is true in Coeur d'Alene. There's also room to improve access through public transit, and that's access to, to things beyond housing within your community. So HUD really takes a holistic view when they're looking at this, and wants to understand, okay, even if I can get a house, can I get to it? Or can I get to services that I need? Or can I, can I access jobs? Is my housing in proximity to that, or does it have connections to that? So we heard from both residents and stakeholders that, that improvements to public transit would help increase access for people that, that need to take public transit. So what really can the city do? Our study concludes with a handful of recommendations. We have six recommendations that are focused on improving housing balance within the city, and then we have a few recommendations that are specific to addressing those housing, fair housing barriers. So I'll start with the improving housing balance options. First, we would recommend to continue to work as you are with the Urban Renewal Authority to convert underutilized and blighted properties to mixed-income and mixed-housing developments. Second, we would suggest considering a city policy that when public land does become available, that one of the top considerations is housing development, specifically mixed-income housing development. We also recommend, number three, offering reductions or fee waivers associated with residential affordable development, so fee waivers or other incentives that may help, help facilitate affordable development.
I have a question on...
Sure.
On that, and, and just to say, in my day job, I work for a low-income housing area, and so that one jumped out at me because I know, you know, if we go out to buy a lot for low-income housing, I mean, there's a 10, 12, 14,000 sewer cap and city fees, whether it's here or post-fall. So that part of me says, well, gee, that sounds like a good idea. But then when I have my public official hat on and know that, boy, that's a, you know, I know that a lot of people have looked at, gee, would you waive the fees? Or one entity, you know, taxing entity has said, well, gee, we shouldn't have to pay sewer hookup fees at the high school or some things. So I guess I'm wondering, is this something where you've actually had experience and see that cities have waived, like their city fees or sewer cap fees?
Sure. Sure. We, we see a lot of cities that, that do sort of the full spectrum of things. So some just give kind of a fee discount, so they'll do a lower fee for an affordable development. There are cities that waive certain fees, so they'll, they'll waive like a review fee. I've seen, I'm not sure I've seen any cities completely waive a TAP fee. That's held pretty tightly in most communities. So, so there are some fees that, that are often waived. There's others that are reduced. So we've seen, there's a full spectrum of options out there. And that actually segues nicely into number four, which is to provide other incentives that are, that are not fee waivers. So density bonuses, height bonuses as well, we've seen, and other variances that help reduce the land development cost per unit.
What do you mean by bonus?
And some of those are in place in, in downtown at present, but fewer of those are in place beyond the downtown business district.
What's a bonus?
Pardon?
You said a bonus. What's a bonus?
Oh, a density bonus. So if you add affordable rate units, then the city would offer you an extra amount of density or an extra number of units per acre than you would typically get under the current zoning.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. A fifth recommendation would be to consider setting an affordable housing target. So, and just an example of that would be potentially saying that 18%, 18 to 20% of the city's rentals, we want to be affordable to, to lower-wage workers. And a lot of times, cities do this just to help prioritize their, their focus. And that, that can come into play through negotiations with private developers as they're negotiating a specific property or a specific development. It can also come into play as you're thinking through incentives as well. And six, just to use this study to help educate, educate residents about historical trends, about current needs, also about future needs. As the city continues to grow, both in workforce and in residents, what does that mean for, for affordable development? What does that mean for our community? What does that, how does that impact? And we have some results in the study that, that sort of forecast your housing need out for the next 10 years. So, so that just using this study to help educate people is another recommendation. And finally, we have a few recommendations related specifically to the fair housing barriers that I mentioned before. So one is to really, again, continue what you're doing. We did, when we, when we did a similar study back in 2009, one of, one of the fair housing issues that we brought forward was a lack of understanding of, of fair housing concerns among residents. And, and we really feel like that need has, has been addressed in a lot of ways, and that, that the city's done a great job in improving that. And, and so we just say, continue to do that, continue fair housing education, and continue to fund through community development, block grants, accessibility investments, financial and logistical support for fair housing workshops. Those are things that you're already doing, that we just say, these are great, keep doing them. Beyond that, we would recommend training city inspectors on accessibility requirements that would help hopefully increase compliance with ADA and Fair Housing Act accessibility requirements. Also, continue to expand and improve your transit system. And then finally, consider universal design incentives. So those are incentives that promote accessible and adaptable development.
Could you describe more what you mean by the concept of universal design?
Sure.
And what the incentives might be, or?
Sure, absolutely. So universal design or visitability ordinances are, are some tools that, that communities use. So that basically means you design a home such that someone who has an accessibility issue or is in a wheelchair could actually visit. So that typically means you have one entry in the house that is a zero-step entry, and that you have one half-bath on the main floor, and that all the doors, doorways on the, on the first floor are at least 36 inches. So those are the primary principles. There are studies that show it adds very, very little cost, if any, to the actual construction once you put these in place. And so, so there's some things that, some cities actually require a certain percentage to be visitable or to be built with these, these sort of universal design concepts.
I can't imagine him being in Idaho. I'm sorry, I just...
That may not, that may be the case.
This is a little overwhelming. Let me ask just a couple of quick things. So a mixed-income development, what does that look like?
So those are most often manifest in, or the easiest example to bring to mind is like a low-income housing tax credit development. I don't know if you're familiar with those, but that's a mechanism that, that uses tax credits to help subsidize part of a development. So development would build, like for instance, a multifamily development, and they would say, okay, I will do 10% of the units that will be restricted by income to people that are earning, let's say, 50% of the area median, median income. And so you'd have a certain portion of units in that building that are income-restricted, whereas the rest are market rate.
Didn't we try and do that in Midtown? Was that kind of the approach we took?
It's been, it's being done now.
Okay.
Yeah, a lot.
It just seems all, I feel bad. I feel like, God, we're not doing good, you guys. This isn't good, but we don't own the property. We don't tell people what to build, how to build. We have certain qualities that they have to come up to, but to tell them that they have to have a, a ramp at every, at a door, that just seems a little, a little overstep. And the formula is the way it's not looking like we're going in the right direction. And what are we supposed to do to go in the right direction? You know, people own their own property, they should be able to do what they want until they come and put the handout for some federal money, which we don't, $260,000, right? I guess I'm missing something, or we're still in Idaho.
But maybe I could help you with that. Is the, is the best way, one of the best ways to make housing, housing more affordable is to create better-paying jobs.
There you go.
Oh, okay.
So that, that is another avenue. Instead of trying to create more lower-income housing, let's work to raise the wages of the folks out there so it makes housing more affordable for them. So I think that's, you know, we, we all went through the, the Great Recession, right? And we've come out of that, but the wages have lagged as comparison to what, what the rents have gone up. And so we need to promote better-paying jobs so that wage gap shrinks. So that's just our simple job, better-paying jobs.
Goodness, God, that's why you're the mayor. Let me ask, one other question was, who takes those surveys? Where this data, is this special people, or?
I don't think so. I don't think it's special people. So we offered this survey online. We also held stakeholder focus groups, that was our stakeholder input. And we promoted the survey through a couple of different methods. It was posted on the city website. It's not statistically significant. So it's not one where we called a random sample through telephone. So people do opt into it. So that means we, we can't make sweeping judgments that this is definitively representative of the city of Coeur d'Alene. But, but for the most part, the, the people that took the survey tended to be, they were more likely to be middle-aged, so sort of in that 30 to 50 range, I think, was, was the age bracket that was most represented. And they tended, they tended to be families as opposed to people that live alone. So it was skewed a little bit toward families, skewed a little bit toward higher income, and skewed a little bit toward middle age.
Thanks.
Sure.
Other questions for Molly? Don't see, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Looking for council action?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the 2015 housing needs assessment.
Take it. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to say, Mr. Mayor, I think you're spot-on with the wage thing, and it, it impresses me how elsewhere in the state, urban renewal is used to bring in jobs that pay a lot of money. I just wish it happened here.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. We will move on to resolution number 16-013, Personnel Rule Amendment to Rule XI. What is that, XI?
The 11.
Oh, okay. Section 11 entitled Retirement Medical Benefit. Melissa?
Good evening. So I am just bringing this rule forward to clarify the process better and just update some of the general criteria around it. The purpose behind this rule is to utilize a retiree for some sort of professional consultant service once they retire from the city of Coeur d'Alene. In exchange for that, there's a medical benefit tied to this. The last time that this rule specifically was updated was 2006, and the savings requirement, as it's written right now, is 18,000 over three years. That's the savings that the employee needs to meet. So if you look at our current pay grade structure, we are leveled from a 21 down essentially, and any position within the city right now would meet those qualifications. So basically would apply to anybody that's currently maxed at their position if we were to refill it with a new hire. So the updates to the rule, there's a few of them, and I'll just kind of go through them real quick. Feel free to ask any questions. I put in here a little more emphasis for the need of a consultant. The department head, the need for the consultant, as well as defining it. I also put in here a little bit more emphasis on involving the department head more to ensure the need for those services are met, increasing the savings from the 18,000 to 40,000 over two years. The, the reasoning, reasoning behind the 40,000 is, I looked at our pay grade structure, and I went off of where our FLSA-exempt employees start in our pay structure, and I looked at those, because those are most often going to be the positions that have some sort of expertise in a specific area that don't have so many people within the same classification. So for example, a firefighter has, you know, 40-some firefighters, where an FLSA-exempt position does not have as many under the same classification. I also took out the option as far as, so right now, the retiree has two different options, whether, one, to stay on our city's medical plan, or two, to opt out. And we were removing the option to stay on the city's health insurance by increasing the opting-out amount that would go into the retiree's HRA VPA. So it would allow them to use that money, which that's what that type of account is specific for. It would allow them to use that to pay for their own private medical plan. And then it just kind of clarifies how the amount would be paid into the retiree's VPA each month. So part of the criteria updating is just, I think this will help encourage departments and managers to plan for separations a little bit better, especially some of the classifications that have, you know, many different people under the same pay grade. Plan for the separation, plan on cross-training a little bit more as that time approaches. Mr. Hammond and I met with all three of the collective bargaining groups. They did have some concerns, which we kind of talked through with all of them. I think that probably the main concern was increasing the amount of savings to the 40,000 because that is going to minimize the use of the rule or the benefit. But after we kind of went into some of the discussion on why, or the intent behind this rule is to have the consultant services plus the savings, they, they understood why it needed to be updated. And again, it hasn't been updated for a, a number of years. There was one change from the posted amendment, that after I posted it, we talked to the fire union. There was a criteria in here that basics, basically said the department head will not refill the position for a minimum of three months from the day, date of the employee's retirement. And the reason for that was just to create a little bit more savings and for, if the department head is going to say, yes, I need this consultant, the way it's happening right now is they're turning around and filling it right away. So there is, that, that savings quickly decreases when they turn around and fill it so fast. So there is some contract language in the fire union contract, as well as civil service rules, that has specifically in there that they will fill their positions within 60 days. So we told the fire union that we had matched that language, and so we changed it to the three months to the 60 days. All the proposed changes were discussed with the executive team, which had agreed that the rule definitely needed some improvement. And I really think that this is a great benefit for the individuals that fall under the criteria and for those consultant services to be utilized for the city. And I think the updates will just help clarify the process.
Questions for Melissa? Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Melissa, the, the threshold you're talking about, so this is basically someone, we're going to offer this to someone who can come back and consult for us, not everyone.
And not, what was the last part of that?
Everyone. So I mean, someone, someone who does a job for the city isn't guaranteed this separation package...
Right.
Simply because it exists.
And I, the savings amount was so minimal that, you know, I think that there was lots of departments and positions that easily met the savings, and so it was a win for the department. They have the savings, a win for the employee. But maybe we could better prepare some of our other employees to take over those, some of those duties if the criteria was a little higher.
And the goal, so this, and we can't do this unless the savings over two years is $40,000.
Right.
And we tried to fix that to a specific item so that we didn't have to come back and fix it all the time. But that didn't work because people assumed that this was judging employees one against the other.
Well, I think that when you look at the leveling, it ends up being right at a pay grade 15. The first thing that happens is everybody says, okay, well, what pay grade am I? Whether they would take advantage of the rule or not, or the benefit. So there isn't, I couldn't think of a really good way to tie the amount to automatically change. I'm going to be recommending that we do a classification and compensation update this year anyways, and so our whole pay structure might change depending on that. And then our fire union is the one group that doesn't fall under our pay grade system. So a pay grade 15 doesn't really mean, mean anything to them. So I'm just, at this point, I just have to update the savings as our pay grades update based on cost of living increases.
But at some point in the future, so we go ahead and we say the city re-kajiggers the way the pay grades go. I mean, the whole goal of this is so that we could save money. And if we can tie that to a position and say, we're saving the equivalent of this employee by retiring someone early, then that's the benefit. But right now, we can't do that because, first of all, it kind of annoyed everyone, the employees, but also we're going to be re-evaluating the pay structures in the future.
Yes, definitely.
Because it's just, Mr. Mayor, what, what I'm after is, so often in government, we tie values to specific numbers. Like the United States Constitution still refers to the value of $20, which was worth a lot more back then. And so when, when we do it in the city and we say, we're gonna, you know, the, the savings has to be $40,000 over two years, well, as the employee wages go up and as inflation goes up, $40,000 becomes less and less over time, which means we have to go back and fix this.
Yes.
And I'm just trying to figure out a way that we could, could set these numbers without having to come back and address it over and over.
Yeah, no, that's a really good thought.
And I failed.
I failed too. But I think that I'm here enough with updating the rules. I don't mind to throw that in. And the employee groups did hear that we will have to update the amount based on cost of living increases or if our pay structure changes. And obviously, the amount in 2006, when it was set, is, you know, 18,000 then is very different than it is now. So it's, it's a very good point.
Any other questions for Melissa?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of Resolution 16-013 Personnel Rule Amendment to Rule 11, Section 11 entitled Retirement Medical Benefit.
Second? Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Evans?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Edinger?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
Motion carry. We will move on to Resolution Number 16-014, Approval of Agreement and Award of the Floodworks Repair Project to Contractors Northwest. Gordon has a report for us tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I would like to preface, before I give my staff report, that normally the next two items would go to the Public Works Committee, but these are a little time-sensitive, and we saved three weeks by just bringing them directly to council. So no, no slide on the committee, just a time-saving. So the first one is the approval of the contract award for the Floodworks Repair Project. This is the final phase of repair of the levee. We install a wall along Northwest Boulevard and then close the opening, we call it Opening 15, which would be north of Rosenberry, where the old mill used to be, and a few other items. You can see from my staff report, the engineer's estimate was 334. The low bid CNI came in at 2765, and that is a responsive bid.
Questions for Gordon?
Dan? Just one question, Mr. Mayor. Gordon, the staff report refers to a concrete pile cap. What is that?
Well, I'm trying to decide how to explain it.
It's not a fashion accessory.
Have you been out to see where the, that, I can't remember the name of it, the new statue that's going to be dedicated on the fourth? In that area, you see the, they're called steel sheet piles, and they're squiggly steel things. But on top of it is a concrete block-looking thing.
Oh.
That's the pile cap I'm talking about.
Okay.
Yeah, so, that was, and in the staff report, I explained that the low bid was two seventy-six, but we had an alternate in there, an additive alternate to replace more of that pile cap. And we, so we selected an additional three hundred and sixty feet of that cap that I just spoke of.
Thank you. Any other questions for Gordon? Okay, we're looking for council action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of Resolution one six dash oh one four, Approval of Agreement with Contractors Northwest for Award of the Floodworks Repair Project.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Renata?
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion carried. We will move now to Council Bill number sixteen dash one zero zero four, V dash one six dash one, Vacation of a Portion of Excess West Kathleen Avenue Right-of-Way, adjoining the northerly boundary of the Lodge at Fairway Forest pursuant to council action of March first, two thousand and sixteen.
I'd like to move to pass what you just said. Council Bill one six dash one zero zero four.
Second? And a second. Any further discussion? If you could read the title, please. Renata?
Council Bill number sixteen dash one zero zero four, An Ordinance of the City of Coeur d'Alene Vacating a Portion of Kathleen Avenue Right-of-Way, Generally Described as a Parcel of Land Lying South of the Kathleen Avenue Center Line and Northeastally of the Prairie Trail Right-of-Way Located in the Northeast Quarter of Section Three Township, Fifty North, Range Four West of the Southeast Quarter of Section Thirty-four Township, Fifty-one North, Range Four West Boise Meridian. City of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho, Repealing All Ordinances and Parts of Ordinances in Conflict Herewith, Providing a Severability Clause, and Providing for the Publication of a Summary of This Ordinance and an Effective Date Hereof.
Roll call, please.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yep.
Move to spend the rules.
Second? And a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yes.
Motion carried. We will now move on to Resolution number sixteen dash zero one six, Agreement with Longwell Trap Architects for the City Hall ADA Enhancement Remodel Project and a Funding Update. And Troy's going to give us that report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. Yes, we have been working with you for some time on ideas, so I'd like to run a couple of parallel paths with you this evening. The first goal that we have is to share with you a contract with Longwell and Trap to continue moving forward the City Hall Americans with Disability Act Enhancement and Remodel Project. The funding, we can talk about, but I'm not proposing any one set funding opportunity. And with your, with your permission, I'll dive into some really good news about the City of Coeur d'Alene's financial statements that will assist us with this program. We have been working on this project since the year two thousand and three. That's been quite a while, and we would like to move this forward. This currently is not in your financial plan, so the approval tonight, I will give you a source of funding, I'll give you two sources of funding for the fixed fee of a hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars that's in the contract. This would put to work the architect in about ninety days to finish up construction drawings. This would get down to the details of where the walls would go, where the computer drops would go, what electrical would need to be done, and really get down to the details that we have in a macro approach presented to you in the workshop here in February. So, that is our major goal. There's a number of different ways we could finance this at the end of it. Again, at this time, this project is looking at approximately a million five in two different phases. You are not deciding on either one of those tonight. We just want to give you a good estimate of what we'd like to get done and what the dollars are in getting that done. Your Municipal Services Director has helped us out greatly in this, along with staff. We will bring forward a outline of who would oversee this as we move the architect forward. We're looking at staff doing the bulk of the work so as to keep costs down. The architect tells me that approximately thirty to forty thousand dollars would be spent if we wanted to have oversight done. That is always an option. It just takes money to do that. This will be a challenging project because we are looking to keep City Hall open the entire time that this project takes place. So, there's going to be some movement of departments. There's going to be some real needed coordination as this moves forward. Currently, what we've been doing is you have come in and allowed us to move forward with liquidating the Fruitland Avenue property. That one is in play and moving forward. We are continuing our partnership with Saint Vincent de Paul to get the Help Center into their hands. You will soon be looking at a trade agreement where Saint Vincent de Paul acquires a piece of land right next to the property we currently control where Fire Station Four will sit. It's a piece of property fifty-five feet by two hundred and eighteen feet deep, and then Saint Vincent will trade that to the city for good cash totaling about five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the Help Center. We are also working on a estimate of value for the Blackwell Island property. Did not have it in time to put in the staff report. We will have the write-up tomorrow. It will come in with a broker's opinion of value on that property of somewhere between two hundred and twenty-five to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, we have some options on how we could fund this going forward. One is the lease. We talked about that in February. It could be a smaller lease. It could be a good way to go now that the State Supreme Court has recognized that a lease is a viable option for the city to enter into. We can get bond attorneys to put a favorable opinion on that document, and of course, the lenders like those favorable opinions. The other news that I have and how we would fund this is the fact that you will see the auditor at your next meeting. This last year was a solid financial year for the City of Coeur d'Alene. We grew your fund balance by one point two million dollars. How did we do that? We did that by the stewards of your city and yourselves continuing to watch the dollars. We missed income by about six percent in the right direction, so six, about five point eight percent increase in income, and we increased our expenses by only two point one nine percent. To give you a comparison, the year before, we grew fund balance, but it was by about two hundred thousand dollars. So, right now, as of fiscal year-end, you have a solid fund balance where you have over twenty-one percent of your general funds expenses in the form of cash. That's very, very solid. You have about seven point six million dollars in unassigned fund balance. We have a really, really good fund balance if we didn't have to spend the money on the general obligation bond that we're working on, but that is totally dedicated to the general obligation bond, so the financials look very favorable because we have six million dollars that we are using in our bank account to go out to pay for those geo-bond expenses. So, a source of repayment or a portion of a source of repayment could be from your existing cash that sits in the general fund. So, you understand the two paths. We would like to move forward with an architect, presuming that after this many years, we still want to remodel the building we've been looking at, that you don't really want to move City Hall or any of the other options that we've looked at, and hope that we can get some construction drawings and get some really, really solid estimates. Stan, for any questions you might have?
Questions for Troy Wood?
So, Troy, so there's a path to borrow money, and we have one point two. Can we borrow it from ourselves?
That's an option.
Okay, we have borrowed money from the water department to buy parks and dirt and stuff like that, right? I mean, just, it's been a while.
I don't advise that.
Really?
I don't. I didn't the last time we did this. I don't, I'm not comfortable. If we have the cash in our general fund, we should borrow from the general fund, which you get to oversee. Water Department doesn't have the money to borrow from right now anyway, and they have some pretty big projects coming forward. But yes, we could use our own cash, pay ourselves back, almost like we went to the bank, and make these payments back to ourselves.
In relating to the architect, this is a fixed fee. Fixed fee is a one-time thing, and it's done, and he walks away afterwards, and then we build it? Or is he involved all the way through?
He's involved all the way through. There's a payment schedule in the contract that speaks to that. As the progress moves along, we would pay him for the work that's done. So, yes, he would be a partner throughout this entire project, presuming we go forward with the construction.
So, this, this one hundred and hundred thousand dollars isn't a one-time, it's a one-time to get the drawings, but then it kicks back in as the progress goes along? As it physically, he's still involved?
He's still involved. He doesn't get all that upfront by any stretch of the imagination, correct?
All right. And that's just normal architectural things?
Typically, they don't like fixed fee so that as the hours add up, they can bill you more. This is based on the value of this proposed dollar amount, so it's about seven percent of that project.
Okay. Has Howard been involved in all this? Will he be right there?
He has been, yes.
Okay. He's kind of our building guy, right? He knows the ins and outs. Do we have to do any major infrastructure, heating, air conditioning?
We have some infrastructure, although all the boilers are solid because of the federal dollars that we were able to use during the recession. The chillers are all fine. We need to change out some valve boxes that are up above that'll give us better control in the spaces throughout City Hall. Those are vintage nineteen seventy-eight model pieces of equipment.
I love that stuff. How about the roof?
We have worked to reseal that flat roof, and it is in pretty good shape at this time. We are not proposing to redo the roof unless we've really missed some of the numbers because it's quickly a hundred-plus thousand dollars to redo the roof in a manner that I would suggest is viable for North Idaho and put some slope to it and get rid of a flat roof. It could be done later, is the upside to that, council member?
Thanks. Ron?
Yeah, Troy, you know, a million point six, ADA improvements. Where are those improvements? And for a million point six, now, you know, when we discussed this once before, this was remodel the whole damn City Hall. Isn't that correct?
Correct.
So, is everything with City Hall right now, isn't, it isn't ADA-approved?
Our restrooms would not qualify. We have a limited number of doors that would be compliant with the Americans with Disability Act, and our elevator is very narrow, very narrow. So, those would be major ones. This project includes a brand-new elevator that would be located very near the front door, which would be at the lower level to bring us into customer service. The other feature that is throughout this whole program is the security issue. We have looked at a security analysis by our own police department, and we have a very open building. Any time of working hours, that is not ideal. If someone was not going to behave themselves and come into City Hall, they could do a fair amount of damage. So, we want to protect our people as well and go to a much better, secure way of having our City Hall and protecting our constituents. So, yeah, it's a pretty big measure to move forward on this. We're reconfiguring access points, redoing hallways, improving the heating system at a much less cost because we've done most of the work. And all, the bathrooms would be redone. We'd add bathrooms that are compliant for families and anybody with any type of disability.
We're going to, we're going to spend one point six million dollars. And I can remember some years back, and I've, since that, since our last meeting, I've talked to some people. And, you know, like I say, some years back, there was a survey taken on some projects with the city, and one of them was to remodel City Hall. And that was one of the lowest things on the totem pole that the city, that the residents of our city said that we should do. And, you know, I just, I just wonder, you know, I mean, you've mentioned the restrooms, the elevator, but also, you're going to be doing some improvements to office space and stuff like that. ADA, I mean, have we been cited or anything? Has anybody said anything to?
Yeah, Troy, you know, a million-point-six ADA improvements. Where are those improvements? And for a million-point-six, now, you know, when we discussed this once before, this was remodel the whole damn City Hall. Isn't that correct?
Correct.
So, is everything with City Hall right now, isn't, it isn't ADA-approved?
Our restrooms would not qualify. We have a limited number of doors that would be compliant with the Americans with Disability Act. And our elevator is very narrow, very narrow. So, those would be major ones. This, this project includes a brand-new elevator that would be located very near the front door, which would be at the lower level to bring us into customer service. The other feature that is throughout this whole program is the security issue. We, we have looked at a security analysis by our own police department. And we have a very open building. Any time of working hours, that is not ideal if someone was not going to behave themselves and come into City Hall. They could do a fair amount of damage. So, we want to protect our people as well and go to a much better, secure way of having our City Hall and protecting our constituents. So, yeah, it's a pretty big measure to move forward on this. We're reconfiguring access points, redoing hallways, improving the heating system at a much less cost because we've done most of the work. And all, the bathrooms would be redone. We'd add bathrooms that are compliant for families and anybody with any type of disability.
We're gonna, we're gonna spend one-point-six million dollars. And I, I can remember some years back, and I've, since that, since our last meeting, I've talked to some people. And, you know, like I say, some years back, there was a survey taken on some projects with the city. And one of them was to remodel City Hall. And that was one of the lowest things on the totem pole that the city, that the residents of our city said that we should do. And, you know, I just, I just wonder, you know, I mean, you've mentioned the restrooms, the elevator. But also, you're gonna be doing some improvements to office space and stuff like that. ADA, I mean, have, have we been cited or anything? Has anybody said anything to us about this stuff? ADA-approved about, I mean, about like the restrooms, the elevator? I mean, the restrooms and the elevator, that can't be one-point-six million dollars for those things. I mean, I'm no contractor, but I don't know. Maybe it could be, but I mean, I don't.
So, those are triggered by building. This would be triggered as we go in and remodel City Hall. So, that comes along with it. It's quite challenging if you have any type of a disability to get into the restrooms the way they're configured right now. It's even tough for those of us that don't have disabilities to get into at least the males restroom and at least walk in there. The other part to this that is the money savings is that we are looking to bring a leased property that holds attorneys back to City Hall to bring the legal department back together. That will help offset the costs going forward. We're in the long-term business. I don't think we'll be getting out of that business in the near future. And we don't have to add one single square foot onto this building.
Okay, other question. Ron, are you done? Any more questions, Ron?
Yeah, for, for now.
Okay. Kiki, did you have something?
I, I had a couple of things. One is that I experienced being in a wheelchair for a little while due to an injury and tried to navigate this building. And it's past due being remodeled. It's not just elevators and stairs. It's doors and weights and widths. And it was, it was a real challenge. And I think that that's, that's kind of a disservice if we don't pay attention to that. So, it needs to happen. I'm just gonna ask that two things be looked at. I think it makes sense to merge these departments. I think that the project needs to happen. How we fund it, we still have some conversation to go. But I think that the efficiencies in managing this building, once it's constructed, need to be really in the forefront of the design. There's, there's a lot of expense and savings in electricity or whatever it might be that the design can incorporate to make sure that this doesn't become real more expensive to operate than it needs to be. And I'm also really would like to put out there that I think there needs to be a project manager on this, on this particular project. I know that this staff feels like that it's a cost savings if staff can do it. But I just have a hard time figuring out how we have a person with as much time and expertise on their hands that could manage an operation this large. And I just feel like a project manager could save any amount of money in managing the project that we would spend on them. So, that's my input.
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Troy, the, the decision point tonight is regarding the agreement with the architects. That money is in the budget?
It is not.
Ooh. So, how are we paying for that?
Those would be two options I can provide you. One, this appears to be a solid year. Our largest department, the police department, is not able to hire everybody that you have in your plan. We may have the savings whereby I don't have to amend, depending on how far the architect gets in this program. The other one would be the fact that you do have cash in your fund balance that we could use when we bring forward the amendment, the last meeting in September, if we need an amendment for the general fund.
So, council's priority for this year's budget was public safety.
Correct.
So, why are we not hiring the cops?
They're working hard to do that. It's not a overnight process.
That makes it kind of sticky. The other thing, and I know we're not making this decision now, but I want to restate what I said at the, at the council workshop, which is I oppose the blank, bank lease option. I think I read the Supreme Court decision and I understand what they were agreeing to. I don't think it's a general public financing solution. And I would especially find it difficult to justify that to the public when we have such a huge fund balance. So, I would lean toward the fund balance with a repayment from the savings of the lease and from the sale of the properties as opposed to doing the, the lease approach. That's just on part two of this.
Dan?
Do we have any idea on how many members of the public come to City Hall in a year?
I have not tracked that particular number, but there's a lot of people that come to this City Hall in a year. I just think of sign-ups for Recreation Department is a huge number of folks coming here. And we handle fourteen-thousand-eight-hundred utility billing customers, not that they all come into City Hall. I don't have a great answer for that, Councilmember.
Well, and I would guess there's, there's a lot. And I guess just my feedback comments, I think the City Hall has probably been undersized for both the public and the efficiency of the, the staff for some time. And I know it's not a fun thing to have to spend money on facilities, but it's also, I mean, it's the public's facilities. And, you know, the, the tools that we have for the public are the employees. And so, I, I think we have to give them adequate workspace. And also, the time to deal with an ADA issue is before you get a complaint. So, anyway, so in, in general, I think this is something that makes sense.
I guess I would add too, at Kiki's point about efficiency, I think that we, we have basically an old fire station that was remodeled into a City Hall, right? I mean, excuse me, police station. And there's still some inefficiencies. And we have, we have our receptionist that's just sitting out in the hallway in front of an elevator. And we have a number of, so there are some efficiencies that can be had. And Dan, as far as your, we approved last time the selling of the excess house on Fruitland. That's gonna probably provide pretty close to what this architect fee is going to be. So, there's a funding source for that as well. And the ADA, to have a City Hall that's not ADA-compliant for elevators and bathrooms is, so a public building, not ADA-compliant is, is not a good thing. So, I think it's good to, to work towards that. The one thing that I'll say and caution everyone, anytime you do a remodel and if, if you look at the, at the cost estimate, it says does not include new furniture. So, we are, we are gonna have to closely look at that and make sure there, there are building projects that they don't include the new furniture. And that's kind of when you build a new house and then your wife comes back and says, well, by the way, I need new furniture. So, that's something that we're gonna have to make sure that we closely watch too. Those are my two cents. Wood?
Two more cents. Ron, I'm, I hear where you're coming from. And since you were here when they built this baby forty years ago, I mean, we got forty years out of it. And, and it's been a great building. I love the concrete steps. I love the tiles in the bathroom and I'll hate to see it go because that isn't cool stuff anymore, especially with architects involved. I do agree with everyone on the remod, it seems crazy to me. It seems crazy, but if it can be more efficient, as Kiki said, you know, new windows, so glass, so it's not cold by the windows. I think the biggest thing that I hate to admit to is the security thing. You know, I like the fact that people can walk into anybody's office and, and that's gonna go away. That's just not the way it's done anymore. And that's, that's kind of tough to give that up, you know, that, that open access to everybody because of the paranoia of what's going on in these days. But I think for the one-point-six, it's crazy money. But I think back forty years ago when they built it, I think we got our money's worth, you know? And we were able to get some grant money to help with that big heating thing, that monster out there on, on the side of the building. And I think by bringing in the attorneys is huge. I mean, there was a time when you were here, there, everybody was in City Hall. I think even Parks and Rec and street guys were here one time, weren't they? Down on McEwen. So, yeah, I don't like spending that kind of money. It makes me crazy. And no offense, architects just keep plodding along. And we have good people here to make sure it's done right. You know, we got our building guys. And it's, it's a, it's a tough one to swallow. But I think by having the money and being able to fund it without raising taxes, without doing anything really weird, I think I have to support this thing.
Okay, any further questions for Troy?
You know, I, one-point-six million, I mean, you know, that's the figure that's thrown out there now. You know, usually that you can just kind of figure it's gonna be a little more than that after the projects get, gets going with change orders and everything like that. You know, that's an awful lot of money. And, you know, as I think Dan mentioned, that, you know, our main purpose was public safety. And that would go a long ways to help our public safety. I, I just wonder, you know, you know, is there a way that the public can be notified that what we're gonna do so that they could, the public can have an input on it before we do this?
We could broadcast it on a television station or something fun like that.
You mean a vote?
I'd be happy to bring it to the newspaper. The police need many things and many tools. This is pretty much one-time money that we don't have to spend again next year if I was looking at a cash flow. If we had to come up with one-point-six million every year, that would be much more difficult. So, what we're looking at is a fixed asset and improving that fixed asset.
Troy, maybe, because tonight, we're just approving the design. Maybe it would make Ron feel more comfortable if, when we brought it forward for the, the remodeled dollar amount, that we had some options that if we could do this or this, that if we did everything, it would be one-point-five million dollars. If we did just selected things, it could be less and, and just give council an option on what they wanted to go for and what they didn't.
Love giving you options. That is correct. That's why this next level, we'll get into the detail where we could maybe look at a option that you get to decide upon, especially if it's a costly one that we could avoid so as to spend less. Because as the mayor has said so well, remodels can be get much more expensive than one anticipates.
So, Ron, would, would that satisfy if we had some, when they brought back the project for final approval of, of the dollar amount, that we had some options?
Well, yeah, I'd like that, but I, I still believe that, that, you know, the, public should be aware of this. You know, you know, we hear all the time that our, our employees are overpaid and all this stuff, you know, which to me is a bunch of crap. But, you know, they're, they're gonna, we go ahead and we do this. The public is gonna say, hey, what are you doing? You, you didn't get our opinion? Get our say-so? Get anything from us? And what are you building, the new Taj Mahal for just the employees?
Well, I, I think this is a pretty bare-bones remodel. It, it's, it's not anything extravagant, you know, when you look at the big, the list of things that are on there. But I know, I know what you're talking about is that, you know, we have to be responsible to the taxpayers. And, and when we talk about the final approval of whatever dollar amount is, it'll be properly noticed. If we have to get out some additional communications to try to get more people involved, to invite them down there to give their opinion, we certainly can do that at that time that we approve that, the, the final remodel. Wood?
Just a quick thought on that, Ron. You know, the public safety side of the security is huge, is huge. I mean, I don't think it's us thinking about the security. It's the police thinking this year. That's their job is to protect this. So, it protects not only employees, it protects any public that is here. The other thing is on, you know, we're elected to make the hard decisions. We all know that. But the reality is we haven't raised taxes in four years. And that he's, he can come up with one-point-six by selling off some parts and pieces. I don't think it gets many, much more efficient than that in what we're supposed to do here. And the, the push behind the remodel is twofold. ADA will take all our money. They'll take a million-six easy if somebody came rolling in here and complained. Why are we putting all this money in sidewalks? It's all about ADA because didn't do it in the seventies and eighties and now we're trying to catch up. So, it's kind of along those same line, public safety on the security side. And ADA is enough to me to motivate and make this thing happen. I don't want it fancy-dancy either, you know? I think they have everything they need here and they do a good job with it. And again, I'm sorry, just kind of.
I would think that if anyone walked into the main floor restroom at City Hall, they would know that it's in dire need. The whole area is, is pretty old, windows leaking, so there's, in need of improvement. It's definitely not Taj Mahal or anything fancy, but we'll have an opportunity to discuss that at the time that that's brought forward. Any other questions for Troy? So, we'd be looking for council action on the architect.
Mr. Mayor, a move that we approve, Resolution sixteen-zero-sixteen, which approves an agreement with Longwell Trap Architects for the City Hall ADA enhancement remodel project and funding update.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
And again, Ms., just to clarify, we're not approving any funding beyond the architects at this point in time. Thank you.
Rule call, please.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
No.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried. We will move on to our public hearing tonight. And this is a quasi-judicial hearing. Does any member of the council have a conflict of interest when it comes to this matter? None being seen. There's a sign-up sheet in the back of the room for anyone that wishes to have any public comment. Do we know, Mike, do we have that, has anybody gathered that list? Who gathered that? I'm gonna take a wild guess, but I'm gonna say there's gonna be nobody on it. What do you think, Wood? Okay, and we will now will have the staff report by Sean Hall.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and council. I'll be thorough but swift. This is the last item on the agenda. All right. So, before us, we have Vista Meadows Annexation. The subject is zoning in conjunction with annexation of approximately fourteen-point-six-six acres. It's located south of Prairie, north of Coeur d'Alene Place, PUD, between Timberlake Loop and Alps Street. So, before I move on, I will read something real quick regarding. Planning Commission heard this request for annexation on February ninth and they recommended approval to City Council by unanimous five-to-zero vote. In conjunction with that, that stopped at the Planning Commission level was also a PUD and a subdivision request for this, for the property. So, here is a picture of the subject property. This is Prairie right along here with Ramsey and Corcellis over here and Alps, which ties in at the southern end of the property.
Is that just, and I don't know if you can answer this, but didn't we just de-annex that castle?
This piece of property, which is five acres, the city did de-annex this property.
Okay, so I know where it is.
Okay, so currently, this property does reside in the Cootney County area. You can see right here, this dotted line denotes the subject property and it is agriculture at the moment. Here's the annexation map. And so, an R-eight district, which is the request, is generally eight units per gross acre. That's from the code. Okay, so now on to the findings. So, the first finding is B-eight, is that the proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. This property falls within the Ramsey Woodland area. In the next slide, you'll see that it falls in the stable. the next slide, you'll see that it falls in the stable established as well as the transition areas. You can see it kind of swoops through the middle there. It's important to note that when we did the comprehensive plan, a lot of these areas were not built out yet. And generally, those, the stable established and transition areas don't follow any specific boundaries like streets or things like that. It's kind of a 20,000-foot view of what these areas are. So I've included here the definitions for both of those. They are also in your staff report. So this is the Ramsey Woodland today. That's found in the 2007 comprehensive plan. And the Ramsey Woodland tomorrow. I've underlined the areas that are most pertinent. I'll read those now. The northern boundary is the edge of the community, offering opportunities for infill. Overall density may approach three to four units per acre. However, pockets of higher-density housing and multifamily units are appropriate in compatible areas. Bicycle trails, as well as parks within a walk, a close walk, and multifamily and single-family housing units will be built in the area. Here are the planned goals and objectives. Inside of your staff report, those are a little more complete. It would have taken many slides to list those out verbatim. So the next finding is B9, that public facilities and utilities are or are not available and adequate for the proposed use. Page eight of your staff report has specific comments regarding stormwater streets, water, wastewater, and fire. B10, that the physical characteristics of the site do or do not make it suitable for the request at this time. Property is pretty darned flat. You'll see on the next slide when I pull up a picture there. You can also, there's some properties directly, let's see, Sunshine Meadows southwest, approximately 8,500 square feet per home in that area. The remainder parcels that surround there are anywhere from two to five acres with single-family homes on there. Here is that picture that I just mentioned. Here's the subject property. Prairie is right along the northern edge here. This is the property that Dan Gookin just identified that was de-annexed recently.
They'll be back.
At some point, they will be. Okay, so photos of the subject property. So we're looking west from Alps. Basically, to the right over here off of the screen is that the house we were just talking about, and this is the emergency access for fire. When they reach more than 30 units, then fire will require a second access to the site. That is, and this is where it will be. And basically flipping a 180 and looking towards Ramsey, this is Alps looking east. So this is from Prairie Avenue, looking south into the subject property. So this is the narrow spot that you, if you remember, and then it widens out as we're looking south. Right. Finding B11, that the proposal would not be adversely affected by the surrounding neighborhood with regard to traffic, neighborhood character, and/or existing land uses. And I point you to page 11 for specific comments regarding those items. Okay, generalized land use pattern, as you can see, largely single-family in the area. There is, the kind of lighter color is vacant at this moment. We have a park. It's a civic use, that's why it's blue. We also have, let's see, what is it? The elderly care, as well as, what is that other facility? It's right next to it. Hospice. That's there. Thank you. All right, so zoning in the area. They are requesting R8. The dark green here is R8. They also did get a PUD. This is Coeur d'Alene Place. The stripes are R8 PUD. We have C17L and C17 PUD, as well as some R3 and some additional R8 in the area. So there are no proposed conditions. Annexations, almost, at least as long as I've worked here, have not come with conditions, and annexation agreements will address concerns for the request. And so, oh, strike that Planning Commission. The City Council must consider this request and make appropriate findings to approve, deny, or deny without prejudice. I'll stand for questions. And the applicant is here as well, if you have any. And she will also give a presentation if you have any questions for her.
Questions for Sean. Doesn't look like we have any for you right now.
All right. Thank you.
So we will open the public testimony portion of this, and there is one person that has signed up. Sandy, if you wish to address the council.
Sandy Young, 601 East Front Avenue, Suite 205, Coeur d'Alene.
And Renata will swear you in.
Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give will be the whole truth, nothing but the truth? So help you God. I do. Thank you. I will be even briefer than Sean, simply because I think that... I'll just open it for questions, and then if you have any, I'm available. So as Sean mentioned, we're requesting annexation of approximately 15 acres of property, south of Prairie, between Atlas and Ramsey. We are contiguous to city limits, and it's R8 zoning that we're requesting compatible with the adjacent property. We also requested our Planning Commission hearing approval of a subdivision and a PUD in conjunction with this annexation, and received approval, unanimous approval for that, a five to one vote, I believe. This kind of gives you an idea of what the proposed development will look like. It's 43 lots at full build-out, 33 duplex, and then 10 fourplex lots. And as the former consultant was speaking about different types of housing in Coeur d'Alene, I was thinking that this fits nicely within some of the recommendations she had for a variety of housing. Density will be 7.24 units per acre. The open space then will end up at 10.6%. And at the last hearing with the Planning Commission, Hillary had done a presentation on making some changes to city code on open space, being more definitive about what the city wants to see in open space. And that was fortunate for us, because our proposal came right after that, and the open space uses and types we're presenting here with this proposal fit exactly within those new recommendations. So open space will be treed and usable open space. This area down here, which was proposed for a lift station, is not counted in the open space, and that lift station is temporary until city sewer reaches this site. Sean had said it's a flat site, less than 5% slope overall. And this is a example of what we anticipate development to be. We'll serve letter from Hayden Lake Irrigation District. Cities willing to serve with wastewater. We're proposing swales. Overall stormwater design is yet to be completed and reviewed by the city engineer. And the streets have all been given a thumbs up by engineering and the fire district, so that the connections to the adjacent properties are shown and approved. And then we talked about comprehensive goals in the call plan, but Sean had even more listed that you saw. So with that, I stand for questions.
Questions for Sandy. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Sandy, if you could go show, well, that'll work on that slide.
Okay.
So the green is the open space.
Yes.
But in that corral of red buildings, that's not really public space, is it?
It's open space for use by the development. It's not, code doesn't require that it be dedicated or for use by the public. This is not a gated community, so those are public streets. And because the open space abuts public streets, you could say that is for public use. It isn't anything that is proposed to be gated off or closed off to public.
So what do you envision, and I know this has nothing to do with the annexation, sorry. What do you envision taking place in there?
Picnic tables and the gazebo, like we had shown.
Okay.
People always want a place to walk their dog.
And that would be maintained by the HOA?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Sandy? I don't think so. I think you, just one question?
Thank you.
So we had just one person on the list to testify. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to testify on this issue? If not, then I will close the public testimony portion of that, and we will look for council action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of A1162109 West Prairie Avenue for proposed annexation from the county agriculture to city R8 zoning district, Vista Meadows LLC, and direct staff to make the necessary findings in order and negotiate an annexation agreement.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just a question on the findings in order. Do you need any more detail on that? Is that good, what he said?
I think that's fine. The record speaks for itself, and staff will go based on the record and what has been heard here. It's always helpful to hear council discuss pros and cons. And so if you have favorable comments or any, or negative comments, I guess, it's good to have it on the record, but I think the record is fairly good.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Motion carried.
We need to stall for four minutes, so Renata will be right on the money.
I'll let you go ahead and make the...
I think Renata knows some Disney songs.
I'd like to move for adjournment in four minutes.
So we have a motion to adjourn. We have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Way to go, Renata. Damn it.